Martina has asked me to go ahead and start, she is running late.
Is that better?
But she's running late and she'll be here. Shortly, and once she gets here she'll take over. Uh, who's gonna, can you just roll for me?
Check it out.
A little check next to their names.
Tom Williams?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Here.
Samuel? Absent. Jerry?
Here.
Anthony? Not included in the agenda, I need to leave right now.
So he's absent?
He's absent.
Yeah, not included. Victor?
Here.
Yoli? Absent at this point, okay? Michelle?
Present.
Ruben? Absent. Angela?
Present.
And Marlene?
So this meeting is called to order, we have eight board members here, which makes forum to start our meeting, to officially start. Does somebody, since our recording secretary is not here today, would like to take minutes?
Anthony said he's gonna look at where you are.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So with that being said, let's go ahead and get started with the general public comment. We have Scott Johnson.
Good evening, everyone, LA 32 board members and stakeholders and guests. Under my general public comment, I'd like to bring the attention to the reoccurring situation here in the community involving the ongoing violence that is taking place specifically over towards the Rose Fields community. I would inform you that there was a shooting this weekend. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna state for the record whose property it evolved, but per the board members here, it would be readily easy to recognize the person. It's a, it's a critical situation that this board and panel, the Public Safety Committee, to have a community town hall meeting regarding this spike in violent community. We have seen a attack on a police officer. We have seen a double murder involving two young girls. We have seen a senseless assassination of a 25-year-old young man who was getting ready to pursue his college career at Carroll State LA. I hate to say it this way, but any other part of town, the community will be in a state of rebellion of what's going on here with the crime situation. And we have to inform the power to be that we need more patrols. We need the use of discretionary funds to be allocated towards overtime. It's been done in the past, should be done again. And most important, we should let the families know of the victims that we, that this body cares about coming to a positive resolution in going towards alleviating the pain that's been caused by this recent, by the recent rash of shootings within the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else on public comment?
I'd like to speak as a stakeholder since I'm actually here. Good evening, everybody, I am Anthony Manzano. Uh, excuse me for not attending the meeting, I have to leave as soon as my public comment is over. Uh, as most of you know, I've already accumulated over 200 weekly call-ins for the fire department, and that is a concern for mine that I've had held over the years as the battalion coordinator, excuse me, battalion team leader for, for the communications. But I also want to confirm what Scott had mentioned about the violence crimes that's been going on in our area. Uh, I do get a lot of information and details about what's happening in the community, and it's, uh, I'd say as of October 28th, which is about two months and a half, I would almost consider it a gang war. Uh, and it's not so much between gangs, but it is in our area, there is no longer a gang. There is no people up on the streets with guns tagging roads hills, this and that in our neighborhood. We've sort of eliminated that or curbed it so much that it's non-existent. What's happening though is the other gangs, which is ISB, or Alserina, or N10 Street, having tried to claim that area, take it over, want to run the streets. And so they say, what they call themselves, "street life." So, uh, there's been a lot of homicides, there's been a lot of shootings, stuff that you don't even hear that's reported, stuff that the police department doesn't even hear because no one calls them, but it's getting really, really unsafe, I would call it. I've seen neighbors running from their house to their car because it's unsafe. We have other neighbors changing their shifts so that they don't have to start work at 5:00 in the morning, and then they don't have to leave the house at 4:20 in the morning when it's really late. So they're asking to be moved their shifts to 8:00 o'clock, so at least they can leave when the sun is out. So it is getting extreme, and we do need some assistance from our council member, we need some assistance from our captain, and we need a lot of assistance from the neighbors. You guys, as, as board members, as community leaders, to be out there, be part of Neighborhood Watch, be effective, uh, be creative, and we all need your help, uh, and hopefully there is no more deaths in, in the coming months, and that these crimes are resolved as soon as possible. I'm sorry once again that I have to excuse myself, but yes, uh, I would say duty calls, and, and this is duty as well, but I have a commitment to the fire department, thank you guys, and I hope you guys have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Manzano. And any more public comment? George, come down.
Okay, uh, I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, or I want to mention it again. This coming Thursday, there is a very important parks meeting concerning Royal Heights, Lincoln Heights, Alserina, Maricello Heights. It's gonna be taking place, it's gonna be Thursday, January 14th, at Lincoln Park. And at the 7:00 AM. It's a very important meeting, because on this meeting, they're gonna determine what issues and concerns for each community, and also the funding, particularly the funding that's gonna be needed for all this. Also, I do have flyers here, so I'm gonna be passing them to the fire department.
Thank you, George. Any more public comment? Okay, so we move on to item number five on the agenda, discussion and possible action. Motion that LA 32 support the application for a conditional use permit, CUP, for Phoenix Global Green School located at 4626 Polis Avenue, LA, California, 90032. Zoning will remain residential, but will allow the school to grow from 12 to 24 students, and will follow ADA guidelines set forth by the Los Angeles Planning Department and Los Angeles Building and Safety Department, and this is from the Land Use Committee.
I'd like to make a comment.
Thank you.
I have to table this item for the next general board meeting. Some of the neighbors in the community were unaware that this is happening. I have a chapter near Polis, and many of them were unaware, so if no one's here to present a complaint regarding this item, and I also requested, um, the chair to provide to the members of the board a copy of the conditional use application, given the idea of what they're asking for, what is their application process.
So do you wanna make a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion to table the item for the next general board meeting.
Postpone it, yeah, postpone.
To postpone until the next general board meeting.
Does anybody want to second that?
Second.
Seconded by Augie Rodriguez. Public comment on postponing item number five for the February general board meeting? Public comment on that? Scott Johnson?
Yes, um, being a former member of the Land Use Committee, I think it's important that the committee members be given, uh, an ample amount of time to show up to the proceedings here, but actions being taken. Also too, generally, in the past, when it comes to these types of issues, have been packaged, put together, paperwork, substantiating, um, regarding the issues being brought up here. I, I think it's very important to that, for this, for this issue here, that adequate amount of time. It used to be that, for example, if there was an issue taking place within 500 feet of a, of a certain address, that area, including that area, in addition to being served paperwork by the planning department, would also have a flyer from the neighborhood council. In fact, we have been able to double that spaceage to 1,000 feet to make sure that all the surrounding stakeholders were given ample opportunity to come and present your comments regarding the issue. I would think, I would support, go on the record, supporting the motion to postpone this to the next general board meeting.
Any more public comment to, uh, motion to postpone the agenda item number five to the February general board meeting? Board discussion, we'll start the, this takes Cynthia.
Uh, no, I'm in agreeance with that, I think that with the application, it's been on our agenda for a couple of months already, so I think we should do a public town hall meeting so that there's more information to discuss with the, uh, constituents and stakeholders in that area.
Okay, uh, Tom Williams, speaking on postponing the agenda item number five?
Number five, postpone.
Hugo Pacheco?
The only thing that would concern me is that even if I postpone it, is there enough information for us to make a decision now, would be my question.
From here to February 5th?
I'm sorry, February 5th. Even during February 5th, if they were gonna have enough information that day to try to make a proper decision, that's what's concerning.
Troy? Sorry, Marlene?
Yeah. I missed why Angela requested to postpone it. The applicant was at the last meeting, and she provided all the information. In addition, she gave a lengthy presentation at our land use meeting, and there were a number of her stakeholders, neighbors present, and she got the petitions for the amount of space that she needed to get notified and signed. But, um, I don't see her here.
Troy?
I'd like to postpone also for the future board meeting.
Uh, Augie?
I want to turn to the next lady.
Angela?
No, I'd like that the chair for land use provide the information to the board of what was sent and submitted, represented to the land use committee, so that we can make an informed decision at the next general board meeting.
And June?
Yeah, um, is it possible that we can ask the person that made the presentation that what brings to attend the next general board meeting?
Okay, that's your question, right?
Yes.
So, um, I have land use chair. Um, will we have enough information to vote on this item for February?
Uh, you don't have all the information that you would need after every land use motion that goes forward, the, as I said, the owner will be there. She was there at the last meeting, she's fully prepared to answer questions, and we present if you guys want her to do another 10-minute presentation, but she did a 20-minute or half an hour presentation at a land use committee that you won't welcome to come to.
Okay, so does that answer your question now, she will, and June, that she will provide enough information for the next postponement?
As far as the permit, she, I don't think they apply for one here, to my knowledge. I'm trying to get her answer, but her, um, architect recommended that they do all this late work first, so they don't waste the money on the permit if it's not gonna be approved.
They should have an application, and the application is what we should be able to see whether they're willing to submit, so the application should be provided.
So you want their application filled out, even though, if they haven't submitted it to the city?
Yeah, because that at least will have something to what their clients submit. Also, any type of community inquiries, if people came to the land use committee, the sign-in sheet, and what was the outcome of the committee, as well as if she has any, um, stakeholder support.
Uh, bring the sign-in sheet, she'll bring, she brought the petition, and the outcome was obviously this motion that came out of it.
Wait.
You have a question, go ahead.
Yeah. Thing is, it's the way it's written, that we support the application. As opposed to that we support the approval of the conditional use permit. Usually, on most neighborhood councils that I've been on, we don't give the ball of the application point. We get involved, once it goes to, to, for a hearing, and then we decide in order, and we weigh in as to whether or not we support that. Once the application's been submitted, we don't vote before the application's been submitted.
So you have a question, you wanna, you want me to ask that to the chair of land use?
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to clarify that, because the motion says we're gonna support the application, as opposed to supporting the approval of the application. That's what we want to do at a neighborhood council.
Would you want to, uh, speak on that a little bit? Once we don't get involved, once the application's submitted, then that's how we get involved?
It's not dramatics, it's a process, especially specifically, and I'm not arguing, but like when I do liquor things, it's after the application, that we never, we never vote before and say, we'll, we'll try and help you get your application in. Once the application goes in, then there's a hearing date, then we go ahead and say, yeah, we're going for it or not going for it.
And John, that's exactly my point, because if there's no application, they can change it later on, and then we're supporting what? Their conditional use permit application, and we don't know what their conditions are gonna be, or what they're asking for, it just seems too blanket for me. And being the former chair of the committee, we always ask them that. If they've already talked through the application process, we have an idea already, we have hearing information, we have what their conditions are gonna be, and that's why I think we're too ahead of ourselves here. I think they should go through that process first, they're seriously making those, uh, changes to their business, and then once they're at that level, then come back to the board, and not we're gonna get community input, because then they're required to notify within 500 feet of their business. Right now, they're not required.
But they don't.
Uh, Julie has a question.
Yes, Jay.
All right, sorry to interrupt, uh, Jay Handel. So typically, if someone files an application, you, your motion shouldn't be to approve the application, your motion should be to approve what's in the application, what's germane to the application. So you can do it based on the application, if they're ahead of time. In my council in West LA, we encourage people to come before they file. We don't wanna be on the tail end of a filing and have to trail against them. We like to be upfront and be able to make changes. So had you have not approved it the way they applied, you could have said, "I will approve it based on the following changes for your filing." But since you're approving what they're filing, you should have a motion that states what you're actually approving. And it's not the application, but it's the application for a CUP for blah, 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 blah. Increase of children in the school, uh, increase of square footage of the family. That should be in the motion. Then you have what you call, the committee should be supplying the council with facts and findings. And the facts are, this should be approved because of the following reasons, and the findings are that it won't, it won't inhibit traffic, it won't be a public nuisance, it won't be this, it won't be that. So when it comes to you guys, you have a backup sheet to the motion that gives you, it's a one sheet, basically, that gives you, you know, facts and findings of the committee, so that when it comes here, you don't have to go through the whole project again, whatever the project is. That the board should be able to, as, like my neighborhood council, it actually becomes a consent item. Once planning has done it, you know, so well, that the facts and findings are always there, and you will feel comfortable with what your committee is doing, unless you pull it from the consent item, planning in my neighborhood council, where we have between five and eight things on a council agenda for meeting, takes about four minutes, because we just, we consent the whole thing. Because we know the planning committee has ripped it apart, and we, we don't disapprove anything. What we do is we approve it with the following changes, if that's what we want, and we basically give the developer direction of what to do. So, that's common.
Thank you, Jay. So let's go ahead and take a vote, all in favor to motion to post, motion to postpone agenda item number five to the February general board meeting? Motion by Angela, seconded by Augie. Please show with a raise of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven yeses. Uh, no's? Anthony said he'll play the video. How many no's? How many abstained? Three. Seven zero three. Motion passes to postpone the agenda item number five to the February, February 2016 general board meeting. We're on number six.
Item number?
Oh, for the, for the minutes, let it be known that, uh, Mr. Chavez came in at... Where are you, Mr. Chavez?
Um, 6:50.
Ruben Chavez walking in at 6:50, and Marlene Fonseca at 6:45. And Anthony said he was going to review the video to, to the minutes and send them to you.
Great, thank you, and thank you for starting the meeting. Um, item number six is discussion and possible action. Motion that LA 32 NC approves the location for the LA 32 NC 2016 elections. Location will be on Huntington Drive in front of Food for Less on May 21st, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. CD 14 will provide the permit for the partial closure of Huntington Drive and light snacks for the constituents who vote. Empower LA will provide all the logistics for the polling place, such as tables, chairs, voting poles, laptops, and material. This motion came out of the IHOP Election Committee.
You gotta hand over that.
Um, can we get somebody to move the motion first?
I moved the motion. I moved the motion.
Awesome. Thank you, Ruben, seconded by Angela. And now we're open for public comment.
Uh, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, go ahead.
Okay, so my name is Jay Handel, and I am the director of Elections Citywide for the neighborhood council system. And I just want to correct one little portion in there, we don't supply tables and chairs. We supply everything else, but we don't supply tables and chairs. We supply voting booths, we supply Wi-Fi, we supply computers, because you're online. You know, we supply all those logistics and people. And by the way, please advertise to your neighborhood, this year we are paying poll workers. So poll managers, poll assistant managers, and poll workers will be paid. So if you go to empowerla.org/elections and click the button for sign up to be a poll worker, um, if you are, if you are not running, you can be a poll worker, if you are running, you can be a poll worker at another neighborhood council that day, or any other neighborhood councils during the election period. But we do not supply tables and chairs just for the record.
What about the snacks?
Oh, that's not us.
You will be supplying me with snacks, because your election is based on how good your food is. I don't care how many people show up.
Thank you, Jay. And now we have a comment.
Scott Johnson.
Yeah, um, I like the concept of having a very acceptable venue to conduct the election. My thought here is, in the spirit of the dotting I and crossing the T, is, what would be the configuration layout? So that, as we all know, a vote is a vote that you have a right to cast, but also have the right to keep to yourself, and have the privacy in doing it. So, in terms of setting that up, how are we gonna lay out the configuration for that? So the community will know that they have a right to cast a vote, they can be done in private. But also too, we also know that the council office has talked about removing a parklet which needs to be cleaned up, and would that be done? And I know they were talking about removing it in February, I believe, this month coming up, but, um, would that also be taken care of by, we all know sometimes, working in public sector, it can be delayed. What assurance do we have that that area will be screwed up in time for reelection? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
No, that was the last one for item number six.
Is anybody else public comment on this? Board comment, let's start. Let's start with Angela.
Oh, then I asked the board to support this motion, so if the committee can move forward, we're trying to get a location.
Augie, any?
Uh, no.
Try?
No, I have a comment.
Um, they will be removing the parklet by, um, by that time, they're gonna, you know, clean up the street, how they do the power, water and all that, to clean it up really good, really nice and neat, and, um, the reason why our committee is recommending it, because if we want it in, in a central area where it'll draw attention like crazy, you know? And, um, I guess when I was doing the motion, I didn't, I, I wasn't visualizing Empower LA bringing tables, I guess tables, I mean, where the voting poles, or the little booths where you stand, and you kinda like, go privately vote? Those are called, what are they called?
Those are called voting booths.
Voting booths.
And, and we do supply, just to answer Mr. Johnson's concerns, we will be doing the layout for you. Uh, the city clerk, I work for the city clerk, I do not work for Empower LA. We will be doing the layout with you, uh, at the location, we'll give you a schematic in advance. Um, we do supply polling booths. Even though it's electronic voting, the computers will be in the voting booth. So everyone will have a very secret vote, as required by law.
Okay, that's, let's continue with board comment, um, are you done?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco? Are you ready? So, Ruben?
Yeah, I wrote the vote, to please, matter of fact, I'm pleading with you, all of you, to please, uh, pass this thing, we desperately need it, we have the ideal location. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
I have another comment.
Victor?
Uh, just two questions, um, what date will, is CD 14 going to remove the park? A specific date? And, um, how many parking stalls will be available for the people that are voting? Because the crap auto and, uh, the dick store are there. The parking hut is just full right there, because there were two benders there. But how many parking stalls will be available for the people that are coming to vote on that day, um, that, the sections where the voting polls will be?
I don't know, that's the chair, the election committee announced.
Um, CD 14 didn't give us an exact date when it's gonna be removed, but they are gonna do what they call a soft, soft closure, which cars will not be parked from where that entrance into driveway, to where pretty much, uh, what is it, AM PM is that? Our vision that we had on the election committee was to have nonprofit and organizations have a booth there, and possibly maybe Public Safety do their, their public safety fair that day, so they can draw attention that we have booths of activities, going and information booth, and that kind of stuff. But as we plan more, we'll let you know more on that.
Is there any estimate of the space that we need?
If there are no parking signs posted for, no barriers.
Yeah, well, they're, when they close it, DOT will come in, close all that, and they'll put the barriers and make sure that nobody parks there every morning, yeah.
Oh, but everybody is saying, isn't there gonna be extra parking? Because right now, it's, you're always looking for parking. So there's gonna be more parking for those people who are coming to vote.
That, that's my concern, that, you know, we're spending a lot of money, and, uh, we're doing a lot of outreach, but I just wanna make sure that we have enough room for people to come and vote, because if they come and try to vote, and there's no parking, guess what, they're not gonna come and vote. I'm just throwing that out there, and we need to make sure that we have enough parking stalls.
Thank you. Um...
And go.
We're on, we're actually on board comment, are you, uh?
I just wanted to point out, there's a public parking, I believe not that far from the food facility, and maybe we can try to add CD 14, we can use that specifically for elections that day. And maybe future people were to that location, but it's easy to walk from there over to, um, by food for less. Jared?
I might, I have, I need...
No, that's what I was gonna say, if we could just block off a section, I don't know, regulations on that, but just knowing that those people can park right here, come in and vote, and then come back out, and enjoy that rest of the season.
Mr. Chavez will be the board.
Well, we'll get in contact with, what is it, that, that hardware?
Store.
Or what is it? We'll, we'll ask him, and maybe if we put his logo on the flyer, promote it, he'll, you know, he'll go with that, and we'll probably to reach in on to them. We'll bring you back that, that information on the next.
Okay, so this is just for...
So, so thank, thank you for the discussion, I'm wondering about the wording on the motion, and I think for next time, I mean, the motion really could end at the date and time. All that other stuff could be not in the motion, but just information provided, so that... I'm wondering if we have to, um, scratch out some of those words?
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna probably, uh, amend to take out tables, chairs, and poles, and put voting booths. So I, I, I guess I like to amend.
I really don't have any very much to do.
Is it?
I, I think we just do the location in the motion.
Right, I don't think, and then I feel like the charge would be in the motion.
That's really what you need, as far as logistics? You know?
We could have CD 14, so that it's a commit.
I don't even, I wouldn't even put that in the motion.
Just remove that whole part from CD 14.
Because all we're voting on is the date and time.
Yes.
And the location.
The location, they can have it.
Yeah, that's true.
Three hours. Got my question over here.
Yes.
Um, how many, uh, polling, uh, stations will it be?
Three?
Three?
You'll probably, at last election, I was, I was here, and you had eight, and we will probably have more than that, because you're electronic, and there may be some people who have challenges that will take longer in the booth. So we'll probably set up more booths to ensure that you don't end up with lines and angry stakeholders. We're taking that all into account.
So then let me, Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amend, that LA 32 approves the location of, where the LA 32 2016 election location will be on Huntington Drive in front of Food for Less on May 21st, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I moved it.
I'm just taking on the other word count.
So, and then you have to mention each person all of the steps.
Yeah.
Okay, or you're seconding?
Yes. No, I moved it. Second.
She's making the amendment, you're seconding the amendment.
All right.
Is everybody commenting on the amendment? Is our board commenting on the amendment?
Yes. The question is, uh, I'm pretty sure everyone knows where Food for Less is at, but the only part to put the address, instead of just Food for Less, Huntington Drive, we have to put the address?
Sure.
It's not necessary, it's not necessary in the motion, it's necessary to notify us and put it on the market. There's only, there's only one on Huntington Drive.
Mr. Pacheco?
You know, I have the fact that the city attorney sent us a message, talking, an email, about how we make amendments to motions. how we make amendments to motions. Um, I, I'm questioning, if this is the, I mean, if this is what you're saying, this is the motion that was set out for the public, even though it's a special meeting. Is this proper way of making the amendment to the motion?
Her concern with amendments to motions where when funding is involved and you're going from $400 to $4,000.
Significant.
Significant isn't defined, but...
What is significant?
I would say any, any change in monetary would possibly lead to problems. This isn't anything monetary and we're just striking words.
This would be improper if you came and made a motion that said, um, "I, I amend the motion by saying I want it to be at the library." That would be a significant motion change that you would have to postpone and bring back if the next meeting made that. You need to vote up or down the motion that was on the table. Okay, but you couldn't make that significant change as an amendment. But this is, this is a, this is a technical issue about supplying stuff. But the motion is really about where, when, you know, and how.
So the ruling for the chair says it's a significant funding issue. For our elections administrator, it's significant in terms of location.
I said significant changes.
Now, that was an example. That was an example of a significant change.
Significant changes. But then for an amendment, you can't change, go from one motion to a completely different, call it an amendment.
Right.
Completely versus significant.
What Mr. Pacheco brought up is, is, but originally what the chair brought up was about just your existing motion. Okay, and, and you brought up about the letter for the city attorney about funding. What I'm doing is giving you a broader interpretation of the letter, which is why you got the letter about the funding. It's about significant changes to any motion, any significant change to a motion. It doesn't allow the stakeholder outside to have been warned in advance of what it is you're gonna do.
Which leads me to my next question. How did the city attorney get involved? Who got the city attorney involved in this?
Why does that matter, maybe?
That's all the topic is.
Are you saying that I can't ask that?
You can, but not at this point during the debate of an amendment. You have to stay on topic during the amendment of the parliamentary procedure.
If you're asking, I didn't contact the city attorney. I don't know who did. That came out of nowhere.
I'm just saying, it's kind of weird that somebody has city attorneys involved in making the motions or how we make motions here.
Okay, anybody else have a comment on the amendment?
Oh. I have one. Uh, first off, it's not important. If you look at the front of Food for Less, it faces, so an address on Huntington Drive would have been clear. And I don't believe we're going to have a partial closure of Huntington Drive. It's just we're going to take parking spaces.
Well, we're removing that partial closure. We're, we're removing that. It's gonna end at 4:00 PM. Anybody else?
Um, okay, I can have to do, um, what Michelle was describing a minute ago, or a few minutes ago now of the discussion, that it's gonna be some type of a community enriched organization event. And they're gonna have a public safety fair, you were saying, at the same time?
You guys want to just say, we're gonna vote on whether we're gonna amend this first and then we'll go back to the original motion. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? Let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of amending this motion to read that Alley 32 NC approves the location for the Alley 32 NC 2016 elections. Location will be on Huntington Drive in front of Food for Less on May 21st, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. All in favor of making this amendment to the motion? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Opposed? One? Abstained? Two? Seven, one, two. Motion to amend passes. So now let's bring the original motion back to the table, which again I'll read one more time. That Alley 32 NC approves the location for the Alley 32 NC 2016 elections. Location will be on Huntington Drive in front of Food for Less on May 21st, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I move it if needed.
Awesome.
Thank you. Um, have a comment?
Comment?
Yes.
Um, not to get overly drawn into semantics and wording on the motion, but when we say in front of Food for Less, if the woman said south, okay, or north, I think we should be specific on that because, for example, if y'all know people go shopping at Food for Less, dummy in the south side in that parking lot to have a polling place, it's gonna create already a more chaotic situation for parking and asking, okay? But then I think you clearly owe it to stakeholders who are gonna show to vote, but also being respectful to merchants. It's what is gonna be the remedy that creates the least, the least disruption of flow of commerce and what also ensures the right of stakeholders to capture ballot, okay? So I, I think here, with the woman saying, let's be concise about the verbiage of where it's gonna be and how, because, you know, some people here would like to know what the definition is as a time, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Um, any other comment? Board comment?
I'm serious, Johnson does bring up a valid, uh, concern. Uh, so during the polling, uh, so would you be taking over the parking lot right there in front of the, uh, House of Dick's Store and the Trap Auto? And if, if so, are they being notified of this?
Um, I think she already kind of touched on that. I, it was my understanding that she said she was gonna notify them, ask for some parking, offer advertisement on the flyers. To me, that means they haven't done it yet. Is that fair?
Correct.
Tuesday, with the she, with me.
Election committee.
The chair said that.
And the reason why we're doing this, because the stipulation sheet had to be submitted. And, uh, the election chair, Jay, told us he'll give us time to get this on the agenda. So that's why it's of time of essence to, to put the location.
Just going back to, so if, if the, uh, the merchants decide not to, um, go along with it, we still do it.
On the public street, yes we go, because we're not doing it on the parking. We're doing it on a public sidewalk street that'll be closed. And they're gonna close, I don't know, it's lane number one or lane number, we had, I guess it's lane number one.
Lane number two.
Lane number one is gonna be closed down and no parking signs will be there on the, on Huntington Drive.
Lane number one is always a fast lane.
So even if Food for Less says, you can't be there, yes we could. We're on public sidewalk, public street.
Lane number one is the fast lane.
It's actually lane number three.
The reason why the location was chosen was because of the traffic that we're gonna have at Food for Less. So it's the best location to be able to call people in to come in and vote.
Yeah, that's, that's something. I'm just concerned that the merchants are, they're not concerned about, you know, they're concerned about people going in and buying their products. So that's what's might be.
It's gonna happen, there's nothing you can do about it.
Okay, are we ready to take a vote?
Please finish on it.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on the motion that reads that Alley 32 NC approves the location for the Alley 32 NC 2016 elections. Location will be on Huntington Drive in front of Food for Less on May 21st, 2016, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. All in favor, raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Who's in?
You. Opposed? Abstained? A zero two, motion passes, so the location will be on Huntington Drive in front of Food for Less. Um, item seven, discussion on possible action. This motion is that Alley 32 NC approves the $10,000 for line item list, which is attached, to fund the Alley 32 NC 2016 elections. Also from the Ad hoc Election Committee. And...
Oh, okay.
Uh, yeah, before you move it, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask Michelle to... It's attachment A, right?
Yes.
Do you wanna, do you guys just wanna read over it, or do you want me to? Can you just take a look at attachment A?
It's attached. It's definitely asked us to do it from our last, it was attached to our last, we do it. Turn here, let's do it, turn here, let's do it.
Do you guys have copies? I do, I do have some extra ones from the West End.
And after reviewing it, then if you wanna move ahead and move the motion?
I can have mine.
I'll move the motion.
Is there a second? Angela?
I'll second it. I'll, I'll be second to go ahead.
Okay, so we're moving it up to the comment. Is there a comment?
Or number seven, yes, there is.
Were they able to move the motion?
Uh, why Angela moved it?
Oh, okay.
Scott John, um, I'll be seconded.
Oh, okay.
Scott Johnson, uh, speaking on item seven?
Right. Um, I'm scanning, as I speak, I'm scanning through the, uh, the line item here on the expenditure. And I'm noticing here it's a expenditure for the community beacon. Um, I, like I said here, in the past, when we had the elections, previously during the election negotiations of the board, we had, uh, uh, multi mediums that we used, flyers, postcards, mailers, uh, that were sent out to the community. Um, but also in response to the community beacon, I think the community beacon is a, a proper paper. It's nice to invest in the community. I think we did a pretty fair job last time looking at local merchants to, to direct allocation from the budget, okay? Um, so I would move forward and, and use needles anyway, but I will also state that we should work as much as possible to ensure that this budget is allocated towards local merchants. A lot of merchants in this community right now are having a hard time, uh, in terms of making ends meet. And I think we should do the best job we can in making sure those merchants are given a fair opportunity to, to make proposals from this budget.
Wouldn't that be out of order? Isn't that attachment B?
Yeah, I'm not sure what to listen to.
We're talking about attachment A.
He's talking about attachment B.
But I don't...
It's the next page. It's the back. That's why we're...
We're, we're on item number seven, right?
We're talking about attachment A.
Which means attachment A. So it just didn't put the right one, Scotty.
Okay.
It's about A. We're talking about A right now.
Right, because you still remain to...
Yeah, no, and then you got the B.
Is there any other comment?
No, maybe.
Okay, so in, in helping to look at this budget and going to the election meeting...
I got it, I got it. It's very simple.
Um, I, I just wanna say that, you know, last time when you guys put stuff out, you had a good turnout. You had good candidate turnout, you had a good election turnout. It was a broad-based, uh, marketing plan. And as I explained in the election meetings, you know, it's all about visuals. It's constant visuals. That's what marketing and advertising is all about. It's not one hit piece, it's not one medium, it's everything. It's gonna be your nation builder, it's gonna be this plan that you have in addendum A. Uh, and again, I'll speak on B when we get there. Uh, but I think that, as I said to the community newspaper, they're a valuable asset. And they are one piece of a component for the bigger picture.
That's for attachment B.
Okay, so I'm talking, okay, and I'm talking, I'm talking about a plan overall with your attachment A, okay? So I think that, uh, your attachment A is a good attachment. You know, the mediums you put through are good. And in the last election, I know Angela was very focused on doing exactly what Mr. Johnson asked, and that was to use local merchants, local printers, local graphics people. And I think it worked out really well. Uh, and it means you guys have to get together and bundle stuff and do stuff, but that's what it's all about. That's what councils are all about. It's about getting together and working together, you know, for the benefit of the community as a whole. So I would strongly urge you to approve addendum A and get going right away because you're an online election and you should be pushing to get voters and people on board right away. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Board comment? I'll start with Angela again.
Oh, um...
Aggie? Try it?
No comment.
I just have a question. Is this like a private vendor, Jeremy Espinoza? Is he a branded somebody and/or a witness? What business does he run? And I guess we'll get those answers after, if we get any more questions.
Do you want to answer the question?
Let's get through the rest of it. All right, do you have any comment? Uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, I do. On the done website, when I was taking the training and funding, the suggested amount for elections was 10%. There are 23.81 with this 10,000. And then if we go further, it's gonna be even greater than that. And I'm really concerned about the fact that now we're turning all, all our money over from elections, I mean, from other entities, entities and committees, or possible things that could happen between now to the end of our terms, over to just elections. I did not come on this committee, I did not come here, nor am I involved just to be an elections committee here.
Thank you.
Uh, I have some clarifications under one. Let's say for the $10,000. Uh, line item six, brochure for elections to print. Well, number one is something that was proposed.
Where are you at?
There's an error in line number six. Now, uh, we're putting, uh, probably six, seven, $7,000 into the US Postal Service. That seems a little excessive when, what's our total budget? $40,000. So I would highly recommend that we make some modifications that I say rather than for postage, we say for circulation. And that we do not define it as going to the US Postal Service and allow the beacon to either meet or beat the prices. So that the $10,122.94 would be maintained, which I agree seems like a lot of money for what, 2,000 voters to come out? So that's $5 a day to get them to come out. Seems a little excessive for our total budget. But that the, we retain the $10,122.74, but we allow that the postage, not be postage, but be for circulation of the postcards, of the postcards for elections and the brochure especially. And I don't quite see how you can have a brochure or postage be exactly the same as for a postcard. So I would have thought it would have been more expensive. So I'd say retain the $10,000, but change the postage to, I say, circulation, back to the data.
Thank you. Reuben? And Henry, go USPS.
Here's one other thing. Uh, brochure for election print. You say it's gonna be almost $2,500. Is that correct? No. Because it's not for printing. It's for circulation of the brochure. Sorry for being petty, but since the attorney has gotten involved, can we change that?
No.
I don't think so, no, I don't know.
That would have to go back to the committee to change it.
It would have to be removed from the budget and sent back to committee to be voted on again and then sent forward back to the board and at that point you're too late.
So we can take line item six, the brochure for election print?
That's a mistype.
Hmm?
That's a mistype.
It's a typo. I mean, I'm saying it should say postage, not print.
It wasn't meant to be printed, it was meant to be...
Well, I say that's where consideration versus what the attorney said.
Yeah, and, but it, it does state over there vendor USPS. I mean, that's pretty, I mean, that kind of logically tells you that it's post office. They're not gonna print the brochures, but I know what you're saying.
Self-enthusiasticity it is not because it says to print.
Okay, I respect your...
Then you, I could probably find somebody in the USPS to print.
We, we got your comment down. It's noted on record and we're gonna move on to Reuben.
Yeah, I respectfully, respectfully, uh, respect the, my two colleagues here that, uh, voiced their opinion under the First Amendment of the Constitution, okay? Uh, but I don't agree with their position on this. Elections come every, just so many years once, okay? Whether it's the elections of the country or this type of... Whether it's the elections of the country or this type of election, they only set up every two years. Okay, and because we cannot go out and solicit funding per elections, we're not allowed to, uh, candidates, or the body cannot go out there and seek private money for the elections, the city, we're all, uh, have to deal with the money that's out there. And all the ninety some neighborhood councils that exist have the same problem we have here. And I'm sure there's many people that feel the same thing as these two colleagues of mine do. But unfortunately, you know, the entire city is going to suffer in terms of the constituents and, uh, in terms of them not having funds for some of their needs that they desperately do need. But because the elections must go on, that is the price that has to be paid by the community at large, the sacrifice that they're not going to get because of elections. We cannot do anything about the elections, they're going to go forward. And let me tell you, 10,000 bucks is not a lot of money. If you start looking at it like they said, so much per person, to me, that's not the way to look at it. Because it takes a, a great deal of, I know that my chair is going to have me running all over the place for the outreach, so I urge the board to please vote on it as it stands.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Um, I'm in favor of all of the suggestions that all of my colleagues have set this meeting and the prior meetings before. The only thing I want to say is that our elections are every two years, so if you take the 42 and 42 added up, it's 84,000. 10% of that should be going towards that, which would be 8,400, and we're only asking for 10,000. It's like 1,200 more. So, I think it's a feasible amount for us to work with. And I do remember Angela stating that they were asking, telling us that 10,000 was minimal of what we should be spending, that it should actually be more. So, I'm in favor for what this is, and if there is a typo, then I think our chair will be able to, uh, address that.
Thank you. Victor?
Yeah, I'm a supporter of this recommendation. Although, I, you know, with the amount, my personal was, was there a census as far as how many community members within the neighborhood, too, that time I checked, it was, I think it was close to 37,000 and 40,000. And with the amount of money that we have, what I can see is 15,000 or closer to 15,000. It's, like you said, it's not merely enough, uh, you need more, but, um, I support what, what's being recommended this time.
What is that? We thought you were happy back there.
Oh my God, I'm a bit small.
Somebody's girlfriend.
Probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe.
Okay, so is there any other comments or, or questions? And then you just want to address them.
The Jeremy Espinoza, he is from El Surino Victory Outreach, so he is local. His business is on Huntington Drive, uh, right next to the antique, um, store. Uh, he's also a pastor at the Victory Outreach in El Surino. And he does have a business, or he does graphics and printing and all that stuff.
That's what the store is?
Yes, it, it's called Jeremy Espinoza.
You.
That's the name of it.
That's the name of the store.
With his, his business, yes. The invoice has his name, we've used them in the past, so this won't be the first time we're using them. We have used them in the past.
It's very reasonable.
Yes, he is very reasonable, other, other vendors that are very hot. And he delivers very good prices and very good graphic designs and that kind of stuff.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, are we ready to take a vote? This is a funding item, so we'll have to take a roll call vote. Um, the motion is that LA 32 approves $10,000 for line item list A, which is attached to fund the LA 32 NC 2016 elections.
Hugo Pacheco?
No.
Tom Williams?
No.
Aggie Rodriguez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Jerry Troy Carpero?
Yes.
Victory June Ayala?
Yes.
Michelle Porzantes, yes. Ruben Chavez?
Absolutely, yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Marlene Fonseca?
Outstanding.
Seven, two, one, motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, discussion and possible action. The motion reads that LA 32 NC reallocates from the 2015, 2016 budget, a total of $4,549.51 from the following categories into the election committee category. That would be listed from A to G, 35389 from executive committee, 2912 from membership outreach. I'm going to have to go ahead and, is that my typo? Mutification.
Two forty-five, twenty-four.
Two hundred and forty-five, so that three should be a decimal point. Two forty-five and sixty-four cents from beautification committee. One thousand from education, two hundred and fifty from business economics committee, four eighty and seventy-six cents from meeting hospitality, and $2,000 from the neighborhood purpose grants. This totals $4,549.51, which will be used for the LA 32 NC 2016 elections on the line item listed on attachment B. You see at the bottom of attachment B, the total down there is 454924. Drawn from one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different categories.
Move it.
Hold second. Okay, open up for further discussion?
Yes, we have, Scott Johnson, on line item number eight, correct?
Yes.
Can we get the timer, please?
Question, this is, my comments are more towards any question form. After this real, say hypothetically, if this reallocation of funding is approved, what is left over towards any contingencies, like that term, that may take place between now and the end of the term of this board? During my further comments, I brought up the fact about the spike in crime rate in this community. What any funds are to be held in reserve, for example, to facilitate a town hall meeting, for example, on the spike in crime rate in this community? Or any other issue that may take up? As always, Governor Jerry Brown, and I agree with him on this. He's moving the state legislator to set up a rainy day fund. I think a neighborhood council could have a micro version of that rainy day fund, rainy contingencies that come up between now and then. So, I would, I would respectfully ask the, the people for the budget and finance committee meeting, who, committee to see what is possibility and make a report to the community on what funds will be available for any type of other issues that may transpire between now and the end of the, the board's term. Thanks.
Thank you. Jake? Oh, you said time?
So, uh, addendum A, again, uh, a really good attempt to move forward, uh, with your marketing plan. I know that in all the neighborhood councils that I've been to, and you're up to, you're like number sixty out of ninety that I've been to in the last few weeks, uh, the average is running between 12 and 17,000 dollars to do a good marketing plan. Our obligation under the plan is very simple. We're supposed to reach out to our stakeholders. We are supposed to bring them in, we are supposed to report on deliverables to them, and report on deliverables to our city council people, take their information and report it back. That is the only thing we're charged with doing under the charter, the ordinance and your bylaws. I will challenge anyone to show me in any of the legal documents that creates us where it says give money to somebody. There is nowhere where it says give money to the school, give money to a church, give money to an organization. We're not a social service organization. We don't, we don't feed people. We are not a piggy bank, we are not a incubator for nonprofits. Our job is to reach people and touch people. There's no better way to touch people than through all the various mediums. And you'll be working with your group, with your election and outreach team on social media, as well as the plan you've put together, because this is a good, well-rounded plan. It's a little bit of everything. And the little bit of everything is what's going to really get people involved and let people know you're here. If I go out in this community, I will guarantee you that 90% of this community doesn't know you're alive. And that's a mistake. That means it's a failure in outreach in the long run. So, two years ago, we did a marketing plan like this, a blitz, and it worked. It bought a lot of people, okay? You're doing it again, which shows you, you're fulfilling your obligation under the charter, bylaws and ordinance. So, I would urge you to go ahead and vote this right through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No.
Okay, Oritana?
I'll make it quick. Last, uh, term, one day, and we, we got so many people to go and vote, this, the committee spent about $24,000, it was anywhere between 20 and 24,000. So, we're not using a lot of the funds right now. We're being very strategic on how to, uh, target the community to be able to come out and vote. So, I urge you to please support this so we can move on. For your question, Mr. Johnson, is the public safety committee is work, still has the funds available to do that town hall meeting, which we do plan to do, and also use the funds, um, around the same timeframe as the election, so we're going to come out to have a public, uh, safety, that's our plan. So, please support this so we can move forward.
Thank you, Aggie?
I'm, I'm all for it.
What?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
Okay, good, thank you. Try?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all supportive.
Thank you. I think they're really great ideas and I think you guys have done a really good job, definitely, for sure. I, I have a little bit of a problem with, um, this not going to the budget and finance committee. I get that the same person is the chair of both committees, but it's still a little bit, to me, I feel like, um, a reallocation of budget, uh, finance, or budget and finance in the bylaws states, they have a law for that. I also have a problem with all this money being taken from other committees, so I don't, I don't know. I think actually I have to abstain for personal reasons on this one. Mr. Pacheco?
Oh, I'm sorry. At the last meeting, January 6th, uh, Hugo had a very good point when he said, we're in the bylaws, as it say that we have to spend money to be in a committee. And he was focusing on education committee. He said, it doesn't say here that just because there's no money, we're not going to fill in the chair? Because we were trying to fill in the chair and everybody was like, well, there's no money, why should we chair it? There's no money. And he had a very good point, and that brings me to what I'm trying to come across. We're taking money from these committees, but that doesn't mean they're not functioning. Beautification laid out a beautiful plan just an hour ago, me and June and, and Julio, and it has nothing to do with funding. We're doing something and we're bringing in organizations and other entities to fund other stuff. We are bringing in volunteers and the outreach. So, when you say, oh, these, you know, you're taking money from these people, then that's where we, as leaders, reach out to those other organizations and say, would you like to co-sponsor and fund and help us fund items and do things? So, we are also doing that in the election committee, aside of pulling money from other committees. We are asking other entities to help us, you know, fund snacks, waters or whatever we can, you know? And as we continue planning, we will continue bringing you that layout and that plan so you can see, you know? I know that the kite fest, uh, last year we did it, I think it was like 8,000. That doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily mean that it is not going to be successful with what it has.
Three thousand.
Because a lot of organizations are willing to come back and help and manaboot and be out there doing it. CD 14 is willing to continue also to help. So, it's not like they're saying, oh, you know, we don't want to continue helping. It's just a matter of putting on the hat and let's get out there and get these leaders and, and that's what we did as outreach. Um, I know that February 19th was approved for the, for the, uh, December meeting on the budget, that if the other committees that still have their money do not use it by February 19th, we will send that back to budget and finance to reallocate to another committee, possibly arts and culture or election. So, you know, just wanted to give you something. Yes, that's it. Tom?
Again, the basic element is picking it from other groups, not only from the committees, but also the neighborhood purpose grants. And we have the neighborhood purpose grants on the agenda for how many months? So, it's an issue there. Uh, I personally feel that committees are the way to use the money. Because they have more direct focus uses of them, such as kite flying. Okay, I don't care about kite flying, but somebody else does. I care more about the senior center rather than kite flying. I also care more about, hey, putting four, four to six inches of mulch on the El Surino recreation area because of the drought and a few other things. Well, what do I need for that? I need volunteers, yeah. But we also, three years ago, needed water and other things just to encourage people to come out so that there's, might say, I don't like to see more than about $500 spent on any particular item. And I think that provides enough to get people to come out and do something with the committees. I feel that taking all of the money from the committees and from, which, which committee was in charge of the neighborhood purpose grants? Two, two grand. That would have been to me at least four, with parties and maybe 50 people each. So, it's, and the issue that I don't like to see the money is taken out of the committees. And actually, might say, from the officers of the neighborhood council, they should be saying, committee chair, why aren't you spending your money? Where's your outreach? Where's your programs? Where are your events that will bring more different people out than just for an election? And those will be scattered throughout the year rather than crocus on one or two days. So, uh, it seems like an awful lot of money for even a two-year phase.
Uh, Ruben, we'll go ahead and come back to you.
We'll, we'll see.
I'll come back to him after.
Okay. I, uh, I'd agree with Tom on his point, he's absolutely correct, 100%. But I'll reiterate, repeat what I said earlier. Of course, Mr. Johnson's, uh, very well justified concern as you heard that it was going to be addressed anyway. So, uh, but as I said earlier, this happens every two years in the entire city. All ninety some MCs have the same dilemma, that money is taken away from the committees so they can have their election. This is in all ninety some MCs, so it's nothing new and it's more, very regrettable that it does happen that money has to be taken away from the stakeholders via the particular committee. But it's a, it's a must, it's a must in order for all ninety some MCs to survive and have a more than a reasonable effect, uh, reach out for the community in terms of getting them to come out and vote, letting them know that there is an NC available for, for them after the elections.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Uh, just as Mr. Hamble was saying earlier, that our charge as a neighborhood council is to promote outreach and bring community in so that they are informed. We are informed as well as what they're looking for, what they need and what their comments and complaints are. But at the same time, I'm looking at this expense, uh, line item and it's saying meet and greet, meet and greet, meet and greet. Formal townhouse level, senior center. These are ways to promote our communication with the committees, with the communication with the community members. So, I support this, uh, $4,549.24 to go to the elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor?
Yes, I agree, but Cynthia, this is something that, this, actually, these ideas should have went to the, uh, the membership and outreach committee for outreach when we get going, we got voted in. Because as Mr. Hamble has mentioned, to this day, you can go places around the community and people still don't know who we are. So, uh, I support this 100%. I would hope that in the future, maybe we do some of these tactics as far as for outreach, just so the community knows that we are here, because, uh, this is kind of like outreach, everything, so I'd support this.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, when I was doing the, the funding, uh, training and listening to the DUN video, it said that we were to increase citizen participation by meeting local names, I think that's what it said. And so I'm sitting here, I'm saying, is this the only way we increase citizen participation by having any election? No, I don't think so. I do agree with what, what you have to say about the fact that we're not a funding source for all kinds of activities, parades or whatever, so you want to talk about. But I think that we're also, also supposed to be trying to find out what the community wants and needs. That's our job. But elections don't do that. Elections get people. Elections get people to come in here to do the job, to go find out what's going on. The other thing that I bring into mind is, we just voted in a ten thousand dollar budget, but under here, this says ten thousand one hundred, ten thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and four cents on the previous item. So there's a discrepancy there. But on this one, there's even a bigger discrepancy. Because you're moving two thousand dollars from the neighborhood purpose grant. At the last meeting, we gave away about a thousand of that money.
It didn't pass?
What didn't pass?
Well, it was, the chair said it had passed. We decided that did not pass.
The chair didn't say it passed. There was clarification. The advocate was notified that we would get a final determination. I've gotten one response back from Malvin, but he's asked to wait for the city attorney to respond as well, which hasn't happened. But it looks like it didn't pass.
Okay, let's take, let's say for, let's say that it did pass. As Malvin said, it did pass.
Malvin, yeah, Malvin apologized the next day or two days later, said he believes he was wrong, and Anthony was correct. And the motion did not pass. But he wants the city attorney to give the final, which has happened.
So I, I guess, I guess it's all gonna depend on the city attorney. Because the question, right, in terms of discrepancies, right? Now you're a thousand dollars short from an approval. If, for instance, the city attorney does say that that thousand dollars did pass, what happens to this, in that, in that scenario? I mean, that's my question. And the other, and to the third, to the third concern that I have is a statement saying that eight thousand dollars would have been the ten percent. Now we're at fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents, which is way above what Dunn recommended for elections, which is ten percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, for a second time, is there any second comments? Are we ready to vote? Okay, this will also be a line of roll call vote. The motion again is that LA 32 NC real allocates from the 2015, 2016 budget, a total of four thousand five hundred forty-nine and fifty-one cents from the following categories into the election committee category. Three fifty-three, eighty-nine from executive, two hundred nine and twelve cents for membership, two forty-five and sixty-four cents for beautification, one thousand from education, two hundred and fifty for business economics, four eighty and seventy-six cents for meeting hospitality, two thousand for neighborhood purpose grants. A total of forty-five, forty-nine, and fifty-one cents will be used for the LA 32 NC 2016 elections as described in attachment B line item.
Hugo Pacheco?
Upstaying.
Tom Williams?
No.
Aggie Rodriguez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Jerry Troy Carverholm?
Yes.
Victor June Ayala?
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes?
Yes.
Ruben Chavez?
Simone.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Marlene Fonseca?
Upstaying.
Seven, one, two, motion passes.
Yay.
So Marlene was abstaining, and who was the other?
The other abstaining was Hugo and Marlene.
Tom was saying.
And Tom was a no.
Taking us out of here.
We have one more.
Yeah, we have time for one more item. I'm thinking if we can table item nine, because there's time on that, we really need ink.
Yeah, we need it.
Can we get a motion to table nine?
I make a motion that we hear number ten right now.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any comment on that?
Public comment?
Public, we're board?
Yeah.
I was gonna give a comment. Yeah, I'd like to, I say we do table it, and by then we'll have locations where it says TBA.
If we hear it in February, the first date's not till April. It's still two months, and there's no planning.
We still have to decide on number ten, though.
So Ruben?
Yeah. So I'm in favor of tabling item nine for February's general board meeting and hearing item ten?
They have his motion to hear it first?
Same thing, table ten.
Oh.
No.
But we hear it first, right now.
So we had to vote on that first.
Okay, I'm sorry. I missed your reading.
Can you just withdraw your motion?
I withdraw the motion.
I don't think it was seconded.
I was just gonna say there was no second on his motion, and we started discussing something else, so...
No, I did second it.
Yeah.
You did? Okay, so...
But she needs to withdraw, I wasted...
Yeah.
All right, so...
So move.
Okay, so item nine's being tabled. There's no opposition to that?
Postponed.
Postponed, I'm sorry. Tell the next general board. Okay. Item ten is discussion and possible action. The motion is that LA 32 NC purchasing for the three LA 32 NC printers not to exceed two hundred and four dollars and thirty cents. This come out of the executive committee based on need, and this was on December thirtieth.
I second it.
Thank you. Public comment?
No public comment, quite simply.
So word count.
How about the law? Yes, I do.
Six seconds.
Number one was, that money's gonna be coming out from what budget?
Operations.
Operations.
That's the last, last operation.
The category of office place.
And at one point, I had heard some discussion previous about the fact that there was a ton of money spent on ink. Could we have an investigation, what happened to that ink?
With youth.
Really? You never got any agendas, right? Actually, where did that be going to, I wonder?
You're a brand new board member.
You should see the stacks of agendas.
I didn't ever get any, you, Ruben.
The stacks of agendas that I have put in the recycle bin, I redo them.
Something happened to that ink, gotta tell you that much.
You guys, the speculation is really...
I said something happened. I didn't say what happened.
There's no place for it. Go ahead. Yes. Is there more discussion on buying two hundred and forty?
We need it.
Two hundred and four dollars of ink?
Thirty cents.
I have something to say.
Okay.
There is, as we purchased before things online, or we found other vendors, I had a suggestion for Michelle quite a ways back on a place that they do refurbishing, or you can buy brand ink, and they're a lot cheaper, and you get a lot more. I don't know if she still has that information. I could pass that to her. Because I know just going into a, you know, staples, that's what they do. So they're gonna go ahead and say, "I got the price," you know, so... And they yield an XL as well as regular staples and office paper. So they, they have the difference. They have the standard size and they have XLs.
Share it with all of us, because we have things to do.
I use them for the need, for my photography.
I would like for her to share it with everybody, because everybody has a lot of other things they do.
Go online. If you buy the printer ink online, it's a lot cheaper than staples.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this item? Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on this.
Hugo Pacheco?
Let me, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That LA 32 NC purchasing for the three LA 32 NC printers not to exceed two hundred and four dollars and thirty cents.
Hugo Pacheco?
Oh, yes.
Tom Williams?
Not here, he left.
Aggie Rodriguez? Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.